Session to order for the purposes of discussing building assessment and options for future improvements here. So we've got a PowerPoint presentation for everyone here that Dean's projecting and I will turn it over to Dean at the podium.
All right, thank you Mayor and Council. So myself, the police chief and fire chief kind of put some information together that condenses the whole idea of where we're at with some of our more significant buildings. Not that any of them are not important or whatever, but kind of pull it all together so that you can get an idea of price tag, where everything is at, and where we think things will be, and to put a couple of options before you for your consideration. Going forward, there is a a certain time constraint involved with putting anything together that would potentially go before the voters. So we have to keep this at a pretty good pace to make sure that we meet all the requirements so that it could be before the voters as early as August. So this is just a briefing. Just an outline that, you know, the purpose is to presentation is to review the status of the buildings, just like I talked about, and to provide some solutions and options that we can put together and how we can go forward in protecting and improving our public assets, assets which are the buildings. So I wanted to make sure we compress this into a manageable size. I mean, the building assessment, I think, was over 100 pages. Quite a bit to digest and really, I mean, beyond the summary doesn't bring a lot of value to the average person, even to the council person to get into the, you know, the weeds of what buildings need paint and what buildings need chiller systems and all the different things. So this hopefully will kind of get it down to the brass tacks of the problem in front of us that you guys are very, very acutely aware of. And then the last thing would be to provide you guys with realistic budget numbers so that you can make some decisions going forward. So this is right out of the building assessment and you got the low numbers all the way to the right and then you have the estimated high numbers. For the purposes of what we're talking about, I'm going to recommend we stick with the high estimates. There's nothing to indicate that inflation is gonna make things cheaper, easier. And I think from a budgetary standpoint in our situation, we want to err on the side of caution. And the other part of it is with a lot of the stuff, we want to make sure we do it right. And so I think that's where we have been working from. So if you total up the high costs, there comes out to 23.3 million for all the building improvements, renovations and whatever that were highlighted in the building assessment. Of the 23 million, 8.7 million of those are just for police and fire buildings. And that's an important number to remember too because if the decision is made to try to replace the 100-year-old police and fire station, those numbers can be walked out or walked back from the high estimate of building commitments. So that takes that 23 down to about 15 spread amongst the other facilities. Also, if you go through that 23 million, pretty easily, there's probably about 2.5 million that can be walked back or line itemed out. And these would be things that are either already planned, are already scheduled, budgeted for, or they're things that would, we would have normally done and resolved and taken, taken care of over the next up to five years anyways. And I feel very comfortable that that two-five, that in that two-five number, that is, but that's a good number to have if you look at the 23 because that's about 10% and that gives you a good leeway as far as different things that can happen. You start a project and like we found out with, you know, the pool and the rink and stuff like that, you run into things that you just didn't think were going to happen. And we've had the same thing happen with a couple of the roads we've done where we had to use our reserves for the project. So that's where those numbers are important. And I feel pretty comfortable with those numbers. So I'm just going to give you a brief, brief overview here and then the fire chief and the police chief are gonna, they put a couple of slides in here to kind of go over their facilities. But, you know, we've talked for a number of years, at least the nine years that I've been here, about going from two fire stations to one. And Chief Anderson will talk about that a little bit. But police and fire station one downtown are almost 100 years old. We got every bit of mileage out of that building that we possibly could have. I mean, it's been extraordinary. I mean, it's still a, you know, you know, important corner in our town's history and everything, but it's 100 years old and it has a lot of challenges with it, as you, as you know, from looking at the building assessment. And some of the stuff that you guys have talked about in the past, no women's locker rooms, we don't have proper housing for fire gears. These are all things that have changed over time. When, when these structures were first came into existence and use and everything, we didn't have women police officers, we didn't have women firefighters. The fire gear and stuff that, you know, Chief Anderson can talk about, we didn't have to have separate storage because the gear was contaminated because we didn't know it caused cancer. It's just the facts. When I got here, one of the other things, we were buying a new fire truck. We had to buy a fire truck that would fit in the door because the old design, we literally had four inch, four inches of clearance and we just, and if you remember people that have been here a while, the old aerial that we had that we got rid of eight years ago had to be stationed at Fire Station Two on King Road, farthest away from our high rises because it couldn't fit. So a lot of things have changed and whatever, so I'll let Chief Anderson come over here and he can pop through a couple of his slides.
Okay, so some of what I'm going to go over is just kind of same things that the administrator just pointed out. But some of the current divisions in our fire stations that we have right now and some of these things you can see, Mr. Kriech already had spoke to, but the proper decontamination areas and zones to fire stations. As he alluded to, we, when these buildings were built, we had no idea the contamination that, that smoke and soot and debris that we have on our, on our gear, on our bodies for that matter, contained. It is carcinogenic. We do have a higher rate of cancer than the general public by 10% and we have a higher rate of mortality from cancer by 15%. So fire stations have evolved with this in mind. Our stations currently, you step off, you back that truck in after a fire, you step off that truck in your contaminated gear. We basically wash, you know, with it on your back with a hose and a scrub brush. And then we set it off to the side and we have to, you know, basically take that stuff out to Station Two because it's the only place that we have the special, I'll call it a washing machine, it's called a gear extractor that gets to the right temperatures and is able to remove those contaminants from that gear. At that point, that firefighter still has absorbed some of these toxins, they still have them on their body. They're going to have to go through any of the other spaces in the station to get to a shower facility. So they're traipsing through the office space, they're traipsing through the living space to the farthest end to get to that shower, which they can then get that stuff off of them. That's not something that happens now with newer stations. They build it to where you have those facilities right off of the apparatus bay. And so you don't ever take those contaminants into our, our living quarters, into the office space, or any of the public area that we would be doing training and so on and so forth. Apparatus sizes, as Dean had mentioned, you know, the trucks, and you can see from that picture, our trucks from, from that day and age, they fit in those bays with plenty of space. He talked about the aerial that had four inches of clearance, you know, it was always a concern in major snow events. Did we get some of that cleared out from the door so it didn't raise the truck up as we backed in to where we might scrape? And then, you know, the little elbow that you have on your garage door opener, well, that had to be spaced between the rungs of the ladder because it would have caught them if you don't position it just right. That's how we made that fit. DEI bathroom shower facilities. So we talked a lot about, and I use the DEI buzzword because we talk a lot about men and women's shower facilities, but the reality is, is nowadays they do individualized shower rooms and bathrooms, so you're not co-showering with anybody. That, and that's just, that's how things are done currently. Inadequate training area. We don't have a designated training room or training area. We have an open space in the living quarters upstairs, it's basically the locker room. When we host training events and in order to capture some of these training funds that the state provides, we have to host them and we have to incorporate and invite in other agencies, other departments in order to utilize those, those grant funds to do so. And we're inviting them into basically our, you know, some folding tables and chairs in our living space to do our training. Now there is more, usually is dedicated training space with all the multimedia stuff that you can actually do so. That's just classroom training. We don't also have any space in which we can do practical, hands-on training as well. There's requirements through, or recommendations for hours of training annually through ISO for grading your department that we can't obtain because we don't have the facilities in which to do so. Equipment storage, there is literally no storage in these buildings, either one. We had DPS build us a shed out at Station Two, affectionately known as the Cookie Shed. Rick might have had something to do with that. But, and we can tell that story a different time, but that's full, there's no space in there. We actually use a re-purposed trailer for storage space of some equipment. ADA compliance, always a concern. We invite the public into our facilities. It is a public building, so to speak. We don't have compliance with the ADA specs, so it's a somewhat of a dangerous building when we invite people in. And then the exercise and wellness facilities, I mean, obviously, police officers, firefighters, we, we have a physical nature job. We don't have a well-suited facility to provide opportunity for that wellness. So this is, now you're going to see some, this is part of my capstone project for Staff and Command. This is a model mapping using GIS systems that will map and tell you where your stations are and it can also identify where they should be. So on the, on the left side of the screen, my left, you see the two blue dots, those are our two current fire station locations. The overlaying blobs indicate the reach of each one of those stations in a four-minute timeframe. That is the NFPA standard for response is they want that first due fire engine to meet, to make any location within four minutes, 90% of the time. As you can see with our two stations currently, with the outline of Trenton in place, we don't actually meet that standard for a decent amount of our community. Now that is average normal traffic time, so it's taking into account stoplights, stop sign, and normal traffic speed. Now, that is average, normal traffic time, so it's taking into account stoplights, stop sign, and normal traffic speed. But, looking at the one on the right, having a centralized location, and that location I can tell you is in the West and Fort Street in a very generalized grid, that that meets, we would meet that standard of four minutes response 90% of the time within our community. It also has a couple of little numbers to note on there. Station One's coverage, that 7,823, that's the population number that that's, that station serves within four minutes. And Station Two currently serves about 14,000 in population. With the, I was unable to carve out that section of Riverview that's, that's also accounted for in that. But, when you look at that same number with a centralized fire station in that strategic location, we're now hitting that 18,000 mark, which, you know, I'm sure we're all aware, our population is 18,500. So, and then, just to give you an idea of a building and what it could look like, that would, I do have the floor plan of this drawing here, that this does meet the needs of current Trenton Fire Department as well as abilities to absorb any future that we would possibly need to account for over the next, I would say, 50 years.
Okay, now we'll talk a little bit about the police side of the building. When we were given part of this project by the city administrator, what we did at the police department, myself and Deputy Chief Nice, got a group of eight individuals together, from three years of experience to 23 years of experience, and sat down and tried to do a needs wants, what do we need, what are our problems here at the police department? So, we came up with a, almost a 40-page PowerPoint with pictures, you're not gonna get that today. You're gonna get a little rundown, but we have that with photos that we go into detail of the deficiencies. But first off, we'll go over the history of our building. So, the construction of what was called the municipal building was completed in 1927. It was initially Trenton City Hall, the court, the police station, then the jail, and the Trenton Library was in the basement. So, it served us well, never truly intended to be a police station, it's not set up to be conducive for those operations. Further through the IACP, the lifespan of a police department is probably around 50 years. So, we have well gone over, we've doubled the output here of the building. So, a couple of current deficiencies here at the police department. Some are going to be the same that you have heard with the fire department. Others are gonna be different when it comes to apparatus and that. But, no women's locker room or changing area, no men's locker room changing area. We currently, in the basement, have one toilet and one shower that drips a little bit. But, as you would see later, right next to it, we had raw sewage coming up through the pipes last week that we had to have an emergency repair on. So, that's, that's what our officers are living with and dealing with on a normal basis here. No training area or classroom. Like Keith had mentioned, we have nowhere when we bring people into house training, we've had to house at other locations. No classroom, no training. We do have a lot of training, either virtual or in person. That is something, we wanna have highly trained police officers and we wanna be able to house that training. We don't have that. Equipment storage is inadequate. Again, we have things stacked in rooms all over the place. We do not have normal storage areas. And again, we have a three-story building, which you see is non-ADA compliant, we don't have an elevator. We haven't had an elevator now for probably six months after we rescued Corporal Chapaniak from the elevator and pulled him up through. But, so that's been down for about five, six months. The stairs, not easy. We have servers, we have server racks that are just sitting upstairs because we can't take them down. Luckily, we've had some of the DPW members help us out with a few things, but we can't even get equipment up and down the stairs. The, it's not a zero entry either. There's steps to get up into the police department, first off, from West Jefferson. And the ramp is falling apart. There, there really is no access if you can't navigate stairs to the police department. So, another conference room or area for meetings, Emergency Operations Center. We do have not, we do not have a place in the department where we can really have administrative conference meetings, union meetings, or disciplinary meetings. The Emergency Operations Center currently, which is located in the basement, which Paul has, sometimes he has to bring his rake in because of leaves blowing through the door or water. It's in the basement where the raw sewage was, just in a different area. That's technically right now the Emergency Operations Center for the City of Trenton, which is inadequate. A few more deficiencies, no workout or exercise facility. Now, it does sound like a want, but the majority of police departments and fire departments now, it's standard for health and safety. No break room, lunchroom, report writing room. So, we have one room right now and it's the squad room. The squad room houses five computers. That's also where they eat, that's also where we have roll call, that's also where people come in and talk. That's also where they test their narcotics and their drugs. It's all in one area. Right where they eat is where they process evidence. We do not have other space in the department. Most departments have separate report writing rooms, separate squad rooms, and separate break and lunchrooms. We do not have any of those. As you see the raw sewage I had mentioned, unsecure or outdated evidence rooms. So, we currently have four evidence rooms at the police station, plus two others at another location. We should not have four places for evidence. We do not have rooms big enough. And those have been patched together. You could go through the ceiling if you wanted to, there's no hard ceiling. We're going through the accreditation process, we're gonna start, those will never pass the accreditation. We'll have to make some adjustments somehow. But, there is direct access to the roof, there's water that comes in from the door into the property rooms. Again, the PowerPoint that we put together, the, what you saw from the collaborative was just a piece. We've gone, taken our own photos, and at a later date, we'll, we'll show you some of these problems firsthand. So, no secure interview room. Sounds, okay, what could that be? We have an interview room up in our detective bureau. So, what happens is, if we have somebody that's committed a violent crime, a felony, we bring them in from the jail. We walk them out of the jail, they can see the exit door. And then we walk them past the records clerk and any other civilian employees. Then we walk them up the stairs, then we walk them through the administration way. Then we walk them up to the second floor where the interview room is. There is no secure place in the jail and it's a hazard. And it's been like this for years and years. This isn't anything new, but it is a problem we have in the jail. So, jail operations have ceased. It's not efficient to monitor or house prisoners. Back in 2002, the jail closed operations for Downriver Agencies. And as we look at this, we have 6,500 square feet in the jail. Many of it, much of it is not monitored. We currently probab, 21 people we could house in that jail at one time. We had a full-service jail. So, realistically, what we need to do is downsize that and maybe have about 10, which some are part-time, some are maybe a little bit longer. But, we can't be in the business of housing other people's prisoners for the Downriver Agency on the backs of our residents and our funds. So, there is going to need, need to be a jail downsizing, which would be right fit for our department. The no temperature control, the roofs are leaking, we do have buckets constantly around. And I know some of those issues are gonna be addressed, and I think the city administrator had said, those are things that we have to maintain on a better basis. But, when you go through the assessment, it isn't that we haven't been doing our job trying to keep things up because that's always the knock, you just let it go. That's not the case. We have a 97-year-old building that has cracks in the structure in the walls, in the foundations. So, that, that's really where our problem is. And again, outdated jail, station monitoring, access control. The whole police department needs to be monitored. We have spots right now in the jail that we can't see people. Now, there's some configurations that we are going to fix, but even the, the access control is way outdated and it's not real safe. So, a modern police station. I could've given you a ton of pictures. But, this one is from Green Oaks Township. But, it has to be inviting, accessible, and able to handle the needs of the department and the community. And in our other PowerPoint presentation that, that you'll see at a later date, it'll go into many of these things, that what does the community need out of their building, right? What do the police need out of the building? And there are a lot of things that new, new builds they have, we do not have. But, we're looking at maybe a one-level style, obviously for accessibility. The more you go up, the more you pay, and we're already having those problems with the elevators and everything like that. So, just an option. As Fire Chief talked about location, the police department is in a funny situation where our location is all over the city. Our officers are on the road, they're driving around. So, a central location is nice, but whether it's on the same footprint, whether it's moved to a foreign west area, those are things that, that we can have that discussion on, whether it stays downtown, whether it's in the DDA district, wherever it may be. It's, it's important, and it's important for us and the community, but it's not as important as the fire further response time because our officers are on the road. But, that's that and we'll have a larger presentation later.
All right, so, for what I got left here, just to give you some assumptions. So, we've gone through the costing and stuff for new build. And a new police station roughly with all soft costs and everything rolled in for what we think would be the needs and everything, should be about $650 a square foot. And priced out at about 13, 13 million dollars. A new fire station is a little cheaper per square foot, but that's because the apparatus area is less expensive, less expensive to build. And it would be in the 550, I think we're at 550 for, per square foot, and it would come out to about 14 million. And these are doing it right, not really cutting any corners in what other people have been able to do. Land acquisition, my recommendation would be to set aside about $2 million for land acquisition. We can sit there and talk about, oh, you know, we would be able to go from two stations to one and we could sell this property. I wanna temper that with, as something y'all are aware of, but in case anybody is watching at home or whatever, commercial property values are in the basement. We have unoccupied commercial structures in our downtown, over on, actually right next to Fire Station Two and stuff. So, I wouldn't wanna hang our hat on that. When it comes to be and, and everything, when we would shed those properties, we would love to. But, just, it, it wouldn't be a good thing to not leave plenty of land acquisition money in there. So, the other numbers I talked about earlier, you know, the 23-3 as far as citywide renovations. If you back, if the will was to, let's build a new police and fire, you could back about 8.7 million out of that 23 and you'd be right around 15 million, give or take. And like I said before, there's 2.5 million in light item exclusions out of there. So, there is some variance, some, you know, wiggle room, if you will, where things could be moved around and adjusted. I mean, it could be, you get into the project and you go, well, you know what, this isn't as bad. We need to direct X amount of dollars over to another facility that needs something more or, or something that's gonna be more of a longer-term thing. Maybe it's something where we're bidding out roofs and, and we go, well, we can save money and do this building now even though it could've waited three or four more years. So, those are all decisions that would have to be kinda made as the process goes on. But, in the end, the, the couple of options that are before you for your consideration and discussion or whatever. Option one, just rip the, not, not rip the Band-Aid off, actually, put a Band-Aid on. Invest the 23 million as suggested by the building assessment. We'd have to expend those funds within 36 months of issuance of the bond money. This is... We would have to set the repayment of debt up with the taxpayers between 20 and 30 years. Here's the problem, I think everyone sitting here recognizes that in 20 or 25 years, maybe the debt will be paid off, but probably we're gonna be right back to square one. You're gonna have 125-year-old police station and fire station. And your King Road fire station is gonna be another 25 years old, so that makes it 85 years old. So, I mean, we keep it around for a centennial if that's really important to everybody. But, it, in my, this is just my opinion. This, it doesn't really make long-term fiscal sense. I would foresee, I don't think any of us will be sitting here in this room in 25 years, but even if you went aggressive at 20-year, 20-year debt repayment, at 20 years, you're gonna have to turn around and go back again because you didn't make the big investment. And believe me, I am not oblivious to the price tag and everything that, that is involved here. But, you know, our forefathers, not to be overly dramatic, but our forefathers, you know, made a lot of big investments. And, and in most recent history, a lot of cans had to get kicked down the road simply because of economics. But, there is an avenue to kinda redo and reset everything in Trenton. So, the other option, well, there's a third one on here, but I don't want you to get too excited over it. But, the other option would be if you really wanted to rip the Band-Aid off and it would involve building a new police department and fire department, centrally, central-located fire station, so you would go from two to one. And let me comment too, because I've talked to some of you at different times or whatever. If, if, if we could do it and we could rebuild the police station, keep it where it is and put the money into it and get another 50 years out of it, I would be, I would be thrilled. But, I really couldn't with a straight face recommend it because if you go through with the rebuilding costs, we're gonna spend the same amount per square foot as we would for new. I know with new, we're gonna get a good, at least 50-year lifespan. Whereas, I really think even doing a rebuild, we're, there's so many issues with a 97-year-old building. I just, if that's the route you guys wanna go, it's fine, but it, it's, I know it's a tougher, a tough pill to swallow, but the long-term investment is really new, in my opinion. So, the investment would be 43.5 million in city buildings total. Now, you know, you saw the numbers before on one of the earlier slides, the 23, 23 and change, 23 million and change. You know, a bond would be able, we would be able to move things around as needed as we got into the actual project. So, you know, what things we could address and what things would need to be done first and foremost and everything would all be able to be scheduled out and planned. But, the 43.5 would involve about 14 and a half million in renovations, 13 million for a new police department, 14 million for new fire, 2 million for land. Keep in mind, the renovation dollar is, we're still working on that high number. But, I do believe it would be more of a 50-year plan. We would probably wanna go down the 30-year debt repayment. It's a more manageable number, more relatable number for, for people. But, that, that would be your second option. Another option that I, I did include in this, because City Hall is underutilized. Another option that I did include in this, because City Hall is underutilized. But I went through and we looked at the square footage and everything that is underutilized. And I talked with Chief Hawkins and everything, and he, you know, listen, our department heads are, all of them are great. I mean, nobody is, nobody's looking to bust the bank if there isn't justification to do it right and everything. But I talked with him, and we could bring some of the police offices into City Hall, but we only have about 2,000 square foot, which if you're a homeowner, 2,000 sounds kind of big. But in a commercial world, it's not that much space. And if you, if you do the math and you took that off of a new build of a police station, it's only a savings of about 1.5 million. I mean, if we really stretched it and stacked people up and everything, we might be able to stretch it to about a $2 million savings. But then we'd have the extended issues of, then we're kind of tied to stations. The bulk of the station would have to be real close or on our footprint here to make it as workable as possible. It was a legitimate idea. I mean, I followed up on it right away because I went, well, you know, if we can figure it out, you know me, I'm cheap. If I can find a cheaper way to do it that gets the same objective, I'm all for it. But that's how, I was actually surprised. I thought we had, we would have more square footage available in City Hall, and we just, we don't. And by the time you build an addition and you add extra systems, it's, I don't think it's the best route. I think honestly, long-term, if commercial property ever rebounded and maybe the projects around this building are done and the downtown is more robust, I think when you could shed this property and move into a smaller, I, that would be the direction I would recommend. Because we have a neighbor to the north of us that moved out of their City Hall to a smaller, more manageable size, and their building's set vacant for 15 years. So I would want to be aware of when we would actually be able to do something with this property. So no one's knocking on our door going, man, I really want to build something where your City Hall, can I tear it down? Right? So anyways, I just wanted to kind of touch on that. Fiscally speaking, so you have optional, I didn't put option three up here because you can just shave a few dollars off of option two. So option one, there are the different repayment methods. I mean, honestly, just because of the return on investment, my recommendation would be, I wouldn't drag that out, I wouldn't recommend dragging out more than 20 years. Option two, I think it's a 50-year return. So I don't think doing it over 30 years is a very big threat, and I think it's a manageable number. And that, those numbers are based on a $100,000 taxable value home. So that would be a market value roughly of $200,000, give or take. But that gives you an idea of number-wise. If you did want to go with option three, you know, you could knock off probably 3% off the, you know. Yeah, it's not very much, pennies. But, so anyways, those are your numbers. All right, questions? We built a watch for you as requested. And the mayor's got the printouts for you. This is all available on Board Docs 2, right, Deb? Madam Clerk? This is all on Board Docs 2, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'd love to hear any questions or any of your thoughts and everything because I really, the big thing for me to come out of this is with a direction. I mean, I have had meetings to make sure we were squared away in the bond area for whatever decision. And you can decide to not do anything. I mean, that's, whatever. I'm just, I'm the bearer of information, and you point me in a direction, and we'll go at it.
So we'll open up to questions now. Mayor Protem Benedetti, and we'll go over here to Councilman.
One question that I have is, so when you talked about the very beginning of this, the 2.1 million, that's just in repairs in those two buildings, the police and fire?
The two, there was, no, there was eight.
2.1 million.
2.5 is walk backs out of the 23 million. So about 10% of that high number could be walked out. And I'll give you an example. There was a chiller noted in there that's already planned to do. There were a couple of roofs that are already.
So that's in the whole project? That's not just the police and fire?
That's.
That's every building?
Right. The only thing that was exclusive to police and fire was the 8.7?
Okay.
If I recall.
Right. Okay. But the other one was for everything else? And then, which I know they probably did because whoever used to come up with all these numbers, you know, they baked in the cost overruns and all those things that, all these unforeseen things that you'll find.
Right. So, and that's why I think sticking with the high estimates on everything was, I don't want it to be... I would hate to pitch something to the voters and them go, that's, this is great. And then turn around and go, yeah, but we're short 7 million to get the project done, or some number. So, no, I went with more aggressive numbers that were on the higher end of what the collaborative felt we would be and everything. Now, is it possible that, yes, some tough decisions would have to get made at some point? You go, well, you have to eliminate 1,000 square foot here, or, you know, we have to, whatever. That's possible. But I put in every high number into every factoring because the last thing I want to do is, there's no coming back to the voters and going, we blew it, you know? We just, we'd have to make some tough decisions.
And you made the ultimate statement that, you know, yeah, it's been neglected, not intentionally, but neglected for years. Times are bad. We understand that. But we don't have that option of doing nothing. We don't. We don't.
I agree with you.
We can all sit here and say that we do, but we do not have that option whatsoever.
And, you know, it's, and I appreciate those comments because, you know, we work a lot, we work very hard on, you know, the budget and making things come together for the budget. And you guys have been very, very accommodating and supportive of all the work that departments have done to put everything together. But they're really, just because of going back to Proposal A and the economic downturn and everything, there, there's no light at the end of the tunnel that suddenly we're going to have. I think we're stable, but we're never going to be in the position without going to the voters to move the city back to even just square one, really. We have a hole that, and I'm glad also that you mentioned it because I don't want anybody to think, I'm not blaming anyone. Listen, you look at 1993 or whatever with Proposal A, and then you fast forward to 2008, and you had a 40% reduction in tax revenues, and the workforce shrunk, and all these other things. And those were decisions that had to be made. They were horrible decisions, but they were necessary decisions. But there just is no avenue for us to be able to invest into the buildings adequately for what I think the Trenton residents expect, honestly.
I'm good.
Councilman Brugge?
Yes, several different things. On the estimate of, you know, 14, 13 million for each facility.
Correct.
Is that just structural only and wiring? Or do we still have to bring in furniture, bring in all that stuff too?
Both of those numbers include soft costs, which would be turnkey, walk in the door.
Okay. And then as far as the options, option two is, I support. As far as repurposing this location and however that repurpose is, I kind of think it's like a Band-Aid still because eventually this building is going to end up being the same situation we're talking about now.
Yeah. I agree with you, and believe me, when it was brought to my attention and I thought, man, because I always want, I always, you know, I walk in here every morning, and there's no cars in the parking lot, but when I leave at the end of the day, you know, we only have 17, 18 FTEs that work out of this building. And, you know, it was built for easily double the staff. And all the business that, foot traffic, now there's so much online stuff, and, you know, everything is done remotely and all these different things. But, you know, the suggestion of, you know, doing police, I thought was great because Chief Hawkins said, that's what it takes, I'll do it. But when you think from the overall, does it really help? Does it really improve the function? No, we would actually end up having people walk in if they want, whatever, wherever he divided his people up, lo and behold, 50% of the people are going to be coming to the wrong building if they want to deal with police because, you know, it's not like it's economical to just blow out a wall and build a two-story attachment. So I appreciate you recognizing that, but I didn't want to leave anything unturned. I mean, we really have been open to anything.
Well, I certainly was not trying to be negative on option three. It's just, it's my assessment of it. And I'm grateful that we looked at everything we possibly could because you'd never know what you find when you turn over a stone. So, nice work, and then pretty much that's all I have to say at this moment.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gabbard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dean, so just so I make sure that I get this straight, these are two separate buildings then we're talking about building, I mean?
Yeah, and that's actually, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Because there, we had some discussions about the benefits of them being together, conjoined, whatever. I'm not saying that they couldn't, depending on the property that was, would be acquired. However, it doesn't, it doesn't really work out to be much of a savings because only the common areas can you do. So on a good day, you could say, well, they can share a training room. So 2,000 square foot, instead, it's going to be 1,000 square foot off of each. It's not this crazily good efficiency or anything. Maybe, it might work out to where it's a benefit as far as what footprint has happened or controlled. But, you know, it wasn't, I don't know. I think it's a perception that I at least had until I really got into it was, you know, yeah, if you can do a combined facility, it's going to be, it doesn't net, it doesn't improve really much of anything.
Okay. I mean, they absolutely need new buildings. You know, they absolutely need new buildings. So my other question for you is DPS?
Yeah, so here's, here's the, and that's why I kind of tried to stress the flexibility in the bond dollars. So we talked the other week, last week, about the proposed pole barn or whatever that's going to help, especially on the water side or whatever. It's, it'll be, it's a needed structure. It's going to help us and everything else. We would have the ability in the bond. We don't, just because the collaborative says or has all these recommendations, we're not, we're not tied to that. We have to be mindful of that. We have other options if we want to do more to any of the buildings. You know, the library is a separate fund. The water fund is a separate fund. And there are other avenues for expanding that. There also could be, and I'm not saying it would go in any direction, but there could be a million dollars that's projected that at the rink, we go, we don't need that. And we would just spend it, you know, invest it, I shouldn't say spend, invest it in another building elsewhere. So there is flexibility. Is there $9 million flexible? Probably not. And that's, I think that's where we would be at price tag-wise for new TPW. But I think for the, I think it's 2.9 or 3.
Yeah, 2.9 is the high.
I think, I think we can do a lot because that doesn't include the pole barn and the the training space, whatever, that is part of that. So I, there's, and those are high dollars too. That's why I want to stress.
Councilwoman Bunckirk?
Yeah, just had some comments. The, this is a funny thing because what you're saying tonight is the same thing we said 25 years ago. When we were looking at building a new fire station and went to the voters, you know, we went and toured many stations, and they were modern, they were nice like the ones you showed tonight back then.
Yeah.
And the wants and needs that you have, more needs to me than wants, are the same issues we're talking about tonight. This didn't happen overnight. It's, it's a shame, it's not like we let anything get to this point. Because it was at that point 20 years ago, 30 years ago. And I just don't want to see us put, you know, good money after bad. And I've said from day one, we need to have one central location and one central police and fire station. I don't care if they're combined, but in the same location that's conducive to the whole city. And I think our residents have seen so much money go into the school systems and seen the outcome of what they've done with our schools. And I think they are impressed with what we've done in the city. And I think people expect in Trenton a certain amount of class and panache and to keep their home values up and to keep everything in align. And I really think that we need to seriously get a location, be serious about it this time, go to the voters and say, this isn't about wants anymore. This is about needs and about keeping Trenton the city that it's always had the reputation for. So, I mean, you've done a great job, and we've talked to the collaborative how many years ago, and they're saying the same thing today.
Seven years.
Yeah, yep. And we, you know, saw their proposals before, and they're only getting worse. So this is not new. I mean, this is just, we don't, we don't want to overtax our residents, but we need to stress to them, when these voters go to the polls, if you put this on it for a bond issue, that this is a must, and it's a must to keep Trenton in the forefront. So I, you know, we can fix up other things and Band-Aid a lot of things and fix them up, but not this time. Not with some of these buildings. And I really hope that the residents can get on board with this and realize that we really need to do something drastic here and make Trenton the city it should be.
I appreciate that.
That's my whole feeling on the whole thing. I mean.
Just as, just as, just a point on one of the, one of the things about the property and stuff. I purposely, I purposely won't go publicly, I won't go public with much discussion about location. That would be something we would, we would have other discussions on because we want to make sure that in the event a bond was approved, that we haven't leveraged or increased the cost of property acquisition by going, this is where we want to, this is what we. I have some great ideas, and I'm sure you guys do too, and I'm probably sure we're all thinking the same type of thing. But I just want to be guarded with what I go public with. There's a lot of opportunity there. We, there, and there are things that can help the city or an area of the city. Definitely the function of the fire department. The fire department is the one, we really need to be along the West Road to Fort Street area. But you saw that on the map, so. But don't think I'm not, I'm intentionally not going down the location road too much.
Right.
Okay?
That's it. Thank you.
I think you pretty much answered the question about the one building. So even though there'd be like a classroom training, fitness center needs that are all kind of overlapping, you still think it would be better off in two separate buildings?
Uh, no.
Or financially, it wouldn't be much different?
Right. I don't believe. Right. I don't believe when you go by the square footage, it would be saved. I'll, I'll give you an example. Like say, say there, I don't know how many square foot are built into the training room, but let's say that each training room is supposed to be a thousand square foot. Yeah, we could save a thousand square foot on, on the build if we could go through and share. But there are issues with the amount of training the police officers and firefighters do with overlapping and scheduling. And I'm telling you right now, we'll still end up sending police or fire to the West Field to do training or whatever. You know, a, a fitness center, I, I don't want you to get, um, a crazy, uh, misinterpretation of it. It, it will be essentially a lot of what they have. It's just, in the police side, we don't want the guys in the basement working, working out. And at the fire station, they're basically stuck in a little side room where they can, they can work out. Could we shave, you know, a hundred, two hundred, well, maybe five hundred square foot off of, yeah, you, you probably could. But the other, the other challenge with that is you're gonna take the properties available and you're gonna go, all right, instead of putting, um, I forget the square footage, eighteen thousand and four, twenty-five and eighteen. So, you're gonna take that property and all of a sudden, well, there's only two locations we can build a combo. So, it, it could be built on the same location and it could be attached. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't plan for that only because it's gonna take away a lot of the options. And this, it's not like, oh, we can build them together and we're gonna save more than a, a small percentage.
Um, I did have another question about the fire station. Um, I've had some people ask me too, and I wasn't confident with the answer. Do the train tracks factor into us having two stations? I thought that was one of the reasons behind it and moving to one. Does that matter? Is that just a misconception that everyone has or?
So, the train tracks have a bearing, but if you keep in mind that we're, we're gonna get a new West Road bridge, it, it doesn't. But when they originally built like where the police station and slash fire station is or whatever. You know, we do send trucks two different directions from the fire side, two different directions to make sure somebody gets, uh, across the tracks. They take the long way and go over West Road or they can, you know, go the short way and go down Jefferson and cut across wherever. But, um, the, the problem with our station locations, and I'm glad he put that map up there. The downtown fire station, fire stations need to be geographic. We put it down on, essentially on the waterfront. So, if you take your arc, we took half of its response area is the river, right? And then the second choice, um, back in nineteen sixty?
Seven.
Okay. Right. So, we put our other decision, and this is probably something hopefully not, whatever, I won't throw anybody under the bus. But putting that station on King Road.
It's the same problem as putting on the river, right?
Uh, it's, it's worse because it's on, literally you could stick an oar out and you'd be on the river. I mean, it's literally you're across the street and you're, there's, it was really bad geographic decision. But in their defense, I will say this, in the fifties and sixties, Dearborn did the same thing where I came from. Stations were built on the cheapest property and it was usually property that was donated by somebody because it wasn't buildable or was less than desirable. So, communities very often would go, well, this'll work. And they didn't really go beyond that. So, yeah, our station locations are poor to say, um, to say the least. Um, but they do, it does work with us as far as, uh, joint response from two different locations, um, because of the tracks. Tracks are gonna be an issue no matter what though. It's just gonna be a lot worse when the West Road Bridge is down. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I, I figured the West Road Bridge would probably coincide with any building of a new station anyway, so I don't know.
See how that works.
Okay.
I don't know. I hope so too.
That's optimistic.
I, I hope so too.
And one more.
We might be done first though.
Would not be surprised.
You think?
Is there any other, um, like smaller departments within the city that would be able to utilize space in one of those new buildings? Or would they just be exclusive fire and police? Is that like your vision?
I think, I think the vision would be, yeah, they're exclusive to, uh, police and fire. The police especially are, are challenging, although some like, some police and fire stations will have a, you know, a community room and everything. But we already have that with West Field and everything. We definitely don't need any extra office space or whatever, um, from anybody in City Hall. And then, uh, DPW should get a very sizable renovation, so I don't think it'll really impact them either. So, I don't think there would be a need. But I'm sure instead of hosting some of the training events and stuff that we have to do in chambers here during the daytime or whatever. We can always, uh, look to our brothers on, uh, in the other buildings and utilize their space.
All right, thank you.
To Emily's point of repurposing, now you talk about option three and repurposing. So, we don't take option three. So, is there a consideration still of repurposing some of this building for another department?
For this building?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it, it could be done, but I, it's kinda counterintuitive only because, uh, we, we already vacated recreation out of this building. So, they would be where their facilities at. I don't know anybody that we could bring in, you know? I mean, the, the space has been created in City Hall, one because of downsizing in staff, just like every other area of the city has a decrease in staff. Um, but the engineering department is largely wide open because we, we subbed that out with, um, CE reins now. So, what we at one time had, you know, three engineering positions. We have actually three with a tech. Now, we just have the, um, um, uh, construction engineer, um, work out of that office and then, and then the, um, building department. We don't have IT in the building taking up, I don't mean that derogatorily. We don't have IT in the building anymore, so that's another office area or whatever. We do have our, uh, uh, new DDA director who's here with us. You know, that has an office up there, but we have unused space. You know, Paul Haley works out of this building, but, um, you know, depending on the, the EOC setup and everything else. It's very likely we wouldn't have to put him in a basement anywhere and he could, um, be, be working and transacting his business, um, adjacent to, directly adjacent to the EOC. So, I don't know if that answers your, your question, you know?
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
So, um, I really enjoyed this briefing and I look forward to.
Is your mic on ma'am? Is your mic on?
I apologized. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I really enjoyed this briefing. Um, I look forward to the upcoming study sessions with the other presentations. I have more, I don't really have too much of any questions because I'm still, you know, just taking it all in. I was just wondering though, based out of option one and option two, do we have anything in the plans in regards to being able to save money for our taxpayers in regards to sa- solar energy? You know, to help with the cost of utilities, especially if they approve option two.
So, I mean, everything would be built as efficiently as possible and, you know, a little bit. Would there be a possibility of adding those things in that are outside of notations made in, in what the collaborative provided to us? Yeah, that option, that option would be there. But as far as actually dedicated funds, um, for solar panels or, or geothermal, um, no, there are, there are not. There is not a, that's a whole nother study that would have to be done.
Because I do know that, I believe it's the Department of Energy that has all these, you know, uh, grants and funding mechanisms for it. If you start to transfer over to that a certain percentage of the utility costs. And I really would like us to have something like that in our building assessment plans, even for some of our current buildings. Because that will actually help our taxpayers if they do decide to choose option one or option two.
Right. So, I, I'll be very honest with you. That information, there's no way that will be ready in time for, I mean, that is probably another several months long effort of trying to come up with what you think could work. You won't get it before the voters this year. I, I'm just being, being honest. I will tell you, there is one, I don't know how exciting it is, but.
I only ask because I, you know, I've been doing research and things like that. And I was primarily looking for another municipality that also had a super fun, super fun site like we did. Uh, however, I did find New Bedford, Massachusetts, but they have a hundred thousand voters, um, constituents in their city. But they were able to, um, save them money in regards to starting to move towards solar panel to help with utility costs and things like that. And they're actually on the forefront and they've been doing it since I believe they started twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. And it, you know, it, it's just something that I would really like us to consider if they do choose option two. The voters.
Okay.
As far as, you know, solar energy.
I'm never gonna look away from an opportunity to save. You guys know what a thrifty person I can be as far as that stuff goes. Right? And, and it's not that it, it can't be built into any considerations or projects. I think the big thing when you look at, you go, well, we wanna add solar or we want, geothermal seems to be a, you know, on and off, uh, trendy, um, option or whatever. I think, I think council will have to be mindful of what is the return on investment. And what I was gonna say is there is a project that will come before this body this summer, um, that's gonna switch all of our, uh, streetlights over to LED. And, um, it's probably gonna be roughly a three hundred thousand dollar investment. But the great news is it's gonna reduce our, uh, electric bill, um, by about twenty-five thousand dollars a month. So, we'll have a return on investment unless, should be in less than a year for the, that, that expense or that, that investment. And I think that's the same way need to analyze, um, solar. Solar is great to, to talk about and everything, but does it, does it apply in, in what situations, you know, does it apply? I think the, the biggest thing is we need to make sure we got roofs, we got buildings that don't leak, don't sag, don't back up.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on that, but I would like, you know, sometime along the way to be able to have that type of assessment and see if it would be valuable for us to have on some of our buildings, not all of them, but some of them. It'll actually save more money.
Yeah, I know like, uh, with the solar too, I remember having a discussion with, uh, Mr. Beaker and it was a great idea. Unfortunately, two-thirds of the roof at Kennedy cannot take them. And that would be the biggest energy saver, you know, in, in our, in our, um, inventory of buildings or whatever. But.
And I did make a note of that in regards to whether or not some of our older buildings could actually be able to sustain that.
Right, right. So.
Um, other than that, I mean, I, option three is really not an option for me.
I didn't think it would be. I didn't frame it that way on purpose, but I didn't wanna.
Option one and option two, I think, uh, are pretty good by far. And like I said earlier, I look forward to hearing more. And that's it.
Councilwoman Prusian and then Councilwoman.
I just, just as a response to that, I think a lot of, no matter what we do with it, like if we got a new building, there's gonna be so much efficiency in new builds that it would make a big difference in a lot of things with having brand new windows and brand new heaters and air conditioners that, that now with the old, how probably inefficient they all are. I think that would immediately bring a lot more, I guess, um, savings and more green energy to, to the city, I think. Based on, I mean, from a hundred-year-old building to a brand new build, everything that would come in it would be more efficient than what, probably what we have now.
And I agree with you, but I think we could also go a little further on some of the buildings if that's what the voters choose.
Anyone else have anything? Comments, questions, concerns, anything like that? Dean, in terms of the next steps, anything else you need from us?
All right. So, one, I, I would appreciate if I got, I would like a firmer, um.
Straw poll and guidance, I think.
I would like, I would like a straw poll from you because needless, I mean, you know what? The budget is pretty much all set and everything. But this is a, a significant draw on your, on your staff to work on this project. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste anybody's time. So, if you guys are, are firm with, I, I think reading the room, you guys are at option two, which I don't have a problem with. But the next steps would be, um, I already have a, um, draft resolution, um, with the language in there necessary to be able to put it before the voters. I have it, um, ready. Um, we have an early May deadline that would need to be met. And I know you guys are probably going.
Put it for August, correct?
To make it on the ballot in August. And that's why I stacked up so many meetings and kept, tried to keep, keep everybody's schedule fluid. So, if, unless there is opposition, I don't wanna worry about getting into the weeds and all the details and stuff. And, and we're not gonna spend time planning something unless you guys show or tell me that you got the willingness, uh, to get this before the voters and, and the decision can't be, can't, can't take too long. If you wanna get it before them, now you're gonna have to give me some commitment because I don't wanna waste anybody. I don't know how nicely to say that.
So.
Tell me what you want.
So, Dean kinda, you know, was nudging things along in a certain way. And I think that, uh, you know, I obviously didn't say anything, but, you know, Dean doesn't go up there and share opinions that I don't agree with, given the nature of his employment. So, that's very helpful. But I, you know, I've gone into this with the mentality, um, certainly for option two, um, over the thirty-year repayment period, um, for the bond. So, I, I think that that was kinda the, seemingly the general consensus that we were getting here, from here. But I guess for, given the parameters, timeline thing like that, uh, that Dean was referencing, is there anyone that has any objections to using that guidance before, uh, for our administration to continue working on this? Everyone good?
I don't. I'm good with option two.
And again, it will have some ebbs and flows as it goes and can get into the weeds as needed. But, um, to get the kinda, the bone structure of this thing rowing still.
So, here's, all right, if, if that's the consensus and that is great, I actually agree with it. Of course, I agree with anything the mayor says. I'm kidding. No, I really do. I, I think, I, I know it's a big price tag. I know it's whatever, it's uphill battle. But, um, if we can get to that launching point, um, I, the language is ninety-nine percent there. Uh, ready to go where it could be on the ballot. Now, you have to take a step back and go, all right, so this would be on the ballot in August. We would wanna keep the flow of information going to the public throughout. So, we can have more, we can have the department has provide more information. We can do studies. I would recommend, because we only wanna ruin one night a week. I would recommend doing study sessions in conjunction with regular council business throughout the summer. That way, you know, uh, police, uh, police one, one week, uh, fire, another meeting, uh, recreation or we'll have Bob from DPW or whatever. We can put together so you're getting. getting the morsels of where we're going, and, and behind the scenes, we can be putting more things together so that it promotes it and communicates it to the voters. You guys know that I'm restricted, and the department heads are restricted, on how we can promote this. I can't tell anybody to vote for it, I can only provide them the information. The, the other information they get is gonna have to come from the seven, the seven people sitting up there that have been entrusted with the welfare of the city, so. But getting back to August, you back it up, and we have to make sure we're putting the information out, making it accessible, um, I don't wanna invest, uh, tons of money and tons of anything into other than, let's make sure we got the groundwork done between now and August and the communication is put out there, so, you know, coming up with renderings and, and different things and drawings, whatever, but we don't need to get sidetracked into the weeds. In the event it would be approved by the voters in August, it would be full speed ahead, because from issuance of any bond money, we got thirty-six months to get it done, so it would be a Herculean effort of property acquisition, you know, finalizing plans and, and everything of whatever drawings and different things you can think of and everything, and at the same time, we'd be doing a lot of bidding and spec-ing for all the other renovation work that needs to be done. It'd be very, very busy, um, thirty, thirty-six months. Now, the great thing is, we don't have to take the bond money right that second, you know, it's not something that happens the day after, um, a vote to approve, um, but there, there is a time period once, once we receive the funding. We can backcharge our expenses that, um, fit into the little box of the renovation and construction, um, but I wa- I want that to be in fair measure, not presumptive that the voters are gonna do anything. That it's a rubber, you know, a rubber stamp or an easy, easy task or whatever, so, um, if you guys are okay, Wednesday's meeting, um, you can cancel it, or I can, um, I have enough from you guys that, I got my marching orders, and I will have, uh, something to you and ready on the fifteenth. That's our next meeting, right? Fifteenth? Yep. So I will have something ready for you on the fifteenth. If you want to have police and fire, um, do more for you this coming week, we can. I don't have a problem if that is scheduled in as, as we go. It's gonna be important to keep the flow of information consistent. And one way to do that is to have regular information meetings where you're getting the information, but more importantly, the public is getting the information. See that I'm getting that? We don't wanna have this forty-three, forty-three point five million, and we got all these grand expectations, and then we need to make sure we're able to talk about it throughout the summer, is, is the honest way, so. It's up to you, we can, we can meet Wednesday, and I can have police and fire come in, um, or we can just, um, have another small discussion, uh, next Monday with our regular meeting. There probably will be a brief, um, closed session, we'll talk about some other stuff, you guys will figure it out, and then, um, that's the way I'd like to proceed, is I'd like to have, add study sessions to your council meetings.
Was, does anyone have any opposition or pressing questions, needs, or anything like that, that would, we would need to have the meeting Wednesday, um, or is anything that, I mean, are we okay on the same page and we can just hold off till Monday?
That's fine.
Okay. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
So will they be doing their full presentation? Because, I mean, we really need something for the voters to be able to look back on as far as like, you know?
Yes, that will be part of a study session. We may do, um, cause I know Chief Hawkins, he likes a lot of slides, um, so I've, I've seen some of his drafts, so, uh, what my, my preference would be, would be yes, and just, we'll pair, we'll pair up a study session, kinda count on it with every council meeting, and we can go through all the different, um, definitely police and fire, cause those are the, the big tickets, um, but I think having, uh, probably Kevin or Bob, our building guy or whatever, um, and Mr. Beak or whatever, we can go through and have them do separate nights, instead of doing, no offense, Chief Hawkins, instead of doing three hours of police and, and, and then another hour and a half of fire or whatever, I think, I think. I know, it's, it's exciting information and all, but I, I think we could kinda slow-feed it, and still make sure, and if we have to, we, we can add meetings if we're not getting through, uh, enough of the material. Another thing, too, why I'm not in rush, rush with that part of it, is there is another, you know, um, the chiefs, both the police and fire chief are actually going to a conference specific to, um, building new stations, and I think they're gonna be able to come back and, um, add more value, um, and probably more slides in Hawkins's case, but.
That's what I was just gonna ask. There're gonna be more slides, but.
No, no.
Keep them under control.
Thank you.
I think, I think there'll be more information, and they're doing that in May.
Any last thoughts? I think, uh, just tying it up, but we'll plan to cancel Wednesday, proceed with next Monday for everything else, so.
What I have for tonight, I'll share on Monday.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Dean, any last parting thoughts?
No, sir.
Department heads got anything? Public comment? Anyone who wants to speak? Name, address, uh, limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none? adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM.